...town council, February the twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, in council chambers, and it's four thirty in the afternoon. Thank you all for coming. I'm sorry we don't have more chairs or a larger area, but we are never quite sure how many people to expect, so thank you for your interest and for attending this. I'm going to read a statement from the chair, and which is part of the minutes of this meeting. This public hearing is convened pursuant to section four six four of the Local Government Act, RSBC, two thousand and fifteen, to allow the public to make presentation to council representing matters contained in OCP bylaw amendment number twelve thirty dot sixteen two thousand and sixteen, zoning amendment bylaw number one oh eight five dot nine six two thousand and sixteen, and zoning amendment bylaw number one oh eight five dot one oh one two thousand and seventeen. Those three amendments matters are at four two one seven Lake Shore Drive, which is the first hearing that we're going to hear. The second one, and I won't read the statement of the chair again, so the second one is concerning the OCP bylaw amendment number twelve thirty dot nineteen two thousand and seventeen, and that is in referring to the regional growth strategy, which will immediately follow this particular bylaw. Every person present who believes that his or her interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaws. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaws. When speaking, please proceed to the microphone and commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. If they wish, members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws. In accordance with the council procedure bylaw, presentations by members of the public shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes each. If a person has an additional information that he is unable to provide within that timeframe, he shall be given further opportunity to address council after all other interested members of the public have been heard a first time. And Mrs. Hilsen will keep track of the time, seeing as we have so many people in here. Please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion during this public hearing so that we may ensure as impartial a hearing as possible. After this public hearing is adjourned, council members will not speak to the public on this matter until after the matter has been dealt with at a public meeting. After this public hearing has concluded, council may without further notice give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. So the, it is required that we have advertising posting, and we have two advertising posts that were in the Asoas Times on February the eighth and February the fifteenth, and those two are included in your package. So I'm going to read the staff summary report, and that is the purpose of this meeting, is to seek public input on the following two matters: application for comprehensive development of four two one seven Lake Shore Drive. Mr. Chris Maradian has made application for the following bylaw amendments to enable comprehensive development of four two one seven Lake Shore Drive, which council gave first and second readings to on October the seventh, two thousand and sixteen; OCP bylaw amendment number twelve thirty dot sixteen two thousand and sixteen, to change the land use designation from tourist commercial to comprehensive development; zoning bylaw amendment number one zero eight five dot ninety six two thousand and sixteen, to create CD nine, comprehensive development zone; and the zoning bylaw amendment number one oh eight five dot one oh one two thousand and sixteen, to add zoning definitions for a resort secondary dwelling and a resort two-family dwelling. The development proposal is to build between two hundred and thirty-four to two hundred and seventy-four residential units over seven phases, including a mix of ground entry housing types, and depending upon the market, two four-story apartment buildings at the lower end of the property with some possible commercial space. About sixty percent of residential units would be available for tourist rentals. A public park would be dedicated in the area of the existing ponds on the subject property. So I am now going to ask for the, the report number four, which is an application for comprehensive development, and that would be from our director of planning, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, and good evening to council, visitors, and citizens. And I excuse myself beforehand for my rather croaky voice, which I've had for quite a while, but I'll get through. Following this staff's public hearing report on Miss Chris Maradian's application for OCP and zoning bylaw amendments to enable comprehensive development of four two one seven Lake Shore Drive for mixed housing along with a small amount of commercial space. Mr. Maradian is the agent for Richard Coglan, president of RLC Strategic Corporation Management Corp. The attached location map shows the subject property along with existing surrounded uses, and you could see that as attachment one. On October seventeenth, two sixteen, council gave first and second readings to the following three bylaw amendments for four two one seven Lake Shore Drive, which are attached to this report. At first, official community plan amendment bylaw one two three oh point sixteen two sixteen, to change the land use designation from tourist commercial TC to comprehensive development CD. And that's attachment two. Zoning amendment bylaw one oh eight five point nine six two sixteen, to create CD nine comprehensive development zone, that's attachment three; and zoning amendment bylaw one oh eight five point one oh one two sixteen, to add zoning definitions for a resort secondary dwelling and a resort two-family dwelling, and that's attachment four. Over the last few months, considerable effort has been invested in fine tuning some of the bylaw amendments, completing applicant supporting reports, and obtaining input from our lawyers. Over view, the subject property is an irregular shaped fourteen point two acre lot situated on the east side of Lake Shore Drive opposite Walnut Beach Resort. It lies within the town's urban growth boundary, but is presently unused. Previous uses include a growing vegetables in the early nineteen sixties and an apple orchard in the late nineteen seventies, followed by a par three golf course in the early nineties. The property contains a level area with two ponds along Lake Shore Drive, and behind that slopes up to the town's eastern boundary with gradients reaching between ten to twenty percent. The comprehensive development zone includes CD nine map one, delineating the applicant's proposed seven development phases, which could take ten years to build out depending on the market, and, on the same page, CD nine schedule one, summarizing the applicant's building plan for varying housing types within each phase. See attachment three. The total number of housing units will range between two hundred and thirty-four and two hundred and seventy-four dwellings. All those eighty-eight will be single-family dwellings and terrace townhomes reserved for resident owner occupation or long-term residential leasing. The remainder comprises one hundred and forty-six, two hundred and sixty-four resort dwellings for tourist rentals, including resort secondary dwellings and single-family dwellings, resort two-family dwellings, and resort multiple-family dwellings in terrace townhomes and apartment formats. Some commercial space may be included on the ground floor of each of the two apartment buildings proposed near to Lake Shore Drive. Phases one, two, and three will be freehold developments, and the remainder will be stratas. As shown on the location map, this proposed mix of residential tourist accommodation and commercial uses fits well within existing uses in the area. And that's shown on attachment one. As shown on the attached cross-sections from the developer's architect, the proposed housing will be stepped up the slope with limited intrusions into view planes of surrounding properties. Please refer to attachment five. The applicant's due diligence includes providing the following detailed background reports, all of which are accessible on the town website. Town staff thoroughly reviewed each report with assistance from our consultants through engineering, and the applicant read all necessary revisions following our summaries of each report's findings. First, the environmental site assessment prepared by Keystone Environmental in September two fifteen concludes that no unsafe chemical residuals remain from past agricultural uses of the property. Second, the geotechnical assessment prepared by ECOI Engineering in July two sixteen evaluates site suitability for development and the presence and extent of any geotechnical After extensive field and lab testing, no concerns are identified with soaps availability, but many construction safeguards are recommended for managing the property's extensive service and groundwater conditions. Three, the servicing design report revised by ECOI Engineering in February two seventeen confirms the engineering viability of the project. It also confirms that all public roads and sidewalks, storming domestic water systems, and sanitary sewers will accord with town quality standards to safeguard against undue maintenance, premature repairs, and replacement of what will become town-owned services. The two existing small ponds at the front of the property will be used for stormwater attenuation and purification before discharge into a soys lake through a pipe under Lake Shore Drive. The applicant will donate approximately one point seven four acres, including the ponds in their surrounds for public parklands as a condition of starting the first phase of development. The Mountford Parkland in this general area of Lake Shore Drive was identified as a town priority in our parks and trails plan. Fourth and last, in terms of reports, the traffic impact assessment was revised by Watt Consulting Group in February two seventeen. It models the vehicle trip generations over successful development phases of the subject property, over and above other background traffic growth which may occur whether or without the proposed development on nearby properties along Lake Shore Drive. Short-term improvements needed by the developer include a sidewalk funding their property and a crosswalk over Lake Shore Drive near Sensitive Section with Forty-Fourth Avenue, which will connect to an existing sidewalk on the other side of the road. By two, two, two thousand and twenty-six, increased traffic volumes will merit improvements to the Highway three Lake Shore intersection, which is already a town DCC project, but on a consultant's recommendation should be expanded with pedestrian crossings and signalization to which the developer should contribute. Needed improvements will be discussed sufficiently in advance with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, which has accepted the traffic impact assessment for information. The town will also review our two-ten Lake Shore Drive pedestrian safety review prepared by Impact Engineering for whether any further safety improvements should be made along Lake Shore. The CD nine zone includes provisions for controlling the commencement of each phase of the applicant's development by requiring applications for, one, subdivision approvals for lots, streets, and sidewalks, right-of-way utilities, and non-off-site services; and, second, development permits for numbers and types of buildings, building form, character, and lot siting, and landscaping, which will also set the framework for subsequent building permits. See attach three. Every effort will be made to spread out development costs, but the first phase will necessarily be front-loaded to cover access streets into the development, sidewalk and street crossing on Lake Shore Drive, and off-site sewer water and stormwater connections. Tourist rental residences could constitute about sixty percent of all housing, so as part of the town's due diligence, our lawyers prepared a rental pool covenant for signing with the applicant. That's attachment six. It requires all tourist rentals to be part of a strata rental scheme with obligations for central guest registration, a minimum stay of one week, collection of hotel taxes, and strong penalties for non-compliance. The covenant, or a version of it acceptable to both parties, has to be signed before bylaw adoption. Impact's community will bring a currently unused property into full productive use for housing community residents, attracting new comers into town and contributing to tourism development. Organizational, considerable continuing workload for planning and development services and our engineering services. Budget will generate considerable town revenues for property taxes, DCCs, service connections, and development building permit fees. Significant dates to putting upon feedback received from the public hearing and signing of the rental pool covenant, it may be possible for council to consider bylaw third reading and adoption at the regular meeting on March sixth, two seventeen. Sustainability will promote economic, social, and environmental sustainability by broadening our economic base, diversifying housing choices, developing at relatively high densities, encouraging sensitive environmental design, and adding to our park system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. I'm just going to identify some of the correspondence that has been received concerning this, this issue. We have emails from Terry Enns and from Gail Borger, and we have letters received from Chris Schirren, Jason Bourne, David and Sarah Hughes, and Christopher Conrad. The comments received to date on the proposed bylaw are, have been printed. They are over at the table behind Mrs. Hilsen, and anyone wishing to view those comments may do so, but we, the comments must stay in this room, so they cannot be taken out of here. You can view them in here and then leave them on the table. So the, the next thing on our agenda is to ask for the applicant to make a presentation. And, Mr. Cunningham, would you, would like to introduce the applicants, please?
Which, which of you want to move the, 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 please?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Schmidt. I'm the architect for this project. And just in a, Alan, Elaine very well described the, the project, but the pertinent points really are that we have worked very diligently to ensure that no views are blocked from any of the, any of the houses in behind. We've taken sections through the site, through every individual house, to ensure that the, those houses' views are not blocked, and that the heights that we are asking for on the development are such that they won't impede those views. The, the site is basically stratified into, let's call it, three, three pieces. One would be the terrace townhomes along the top of the hill, with views out to the lake. The middle portion is all intended to be easily accessible, single-family residences, with a, with a view through the, the central part where the park, where the parkland is dedicated and the ponds. And finally, on the two corners of the site would be the higher-density tourism hotel slash apartment type of a development. And I think that sort of covers it.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add, Chris, or is that?
Thank you. And Chris Maradian is also here. He is the developer. So for those of you who haven't met, okay, thank you. I'm going to ask for people to, to make presentation, and then after, there may be some questions that, after they have spoken, that you may wish to answer.
Yeah.
Would that work?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, so I do have a list here of, of people who have signed up to speak, and as you heard, I'm going to go through the list according to the names that are written down in this order. Please come to the microphone. Please, please know that because of the number of people here and the number of people who wish to speak, we will allow you five minutes at the max first, and then if you wish to say something after you have more to add, we can certainly do that after everyone has had a first turn. Okay, so first on our list is Eileen McGinn.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Sue McCordough, Mayor McCordough, rather, and councillors and folks. Anyway, I'm, I'm here on behalf of-
Could you, sorry, just because you're first, your name and your address.
Okay. Eileen McGinn, nine dash four one one zero, Thirty-Sixth Avenue, we're in Sonora Ridge, in Asoas. So I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the Sonora Ridge residents, but mainly I, it was myself, and, you know, from what I see, I've had a background for many years in real estate, land development, and housing. I see the project that these gentlemen have designed as, as a well-thought-out project. My concerns and our concerns are really more addressing a couple of areas, and the first one is increased traffic on Lake Shore, the high density of housing that's already on that side, and housing and campgrounds and that, the road widths that we already have on Lake Shore Drive, and lack of storm sewers or storm drain or proper draining systems that we have over there right now, safety of the residents, and your evacuation plans. So, you know, I just did a quick count, just taking a look at the stuff that's on Lake Shore Drive from, from the far end of Lake Shore Drive, which I know isn't in the town, but you could look at Brookville, Cabanas, Oasis, Walton's, Los Montanas, Village on the Lake, Walnut Beach, Waterslide, Island View, Casa de Mila Oro, all of the wineries, the new distillery that's been approved, and all the private residence, not even counting the private residence, but just the campgrounds and that alone. There's over fourteen hundred sites there, you know, and fourteen hundred cars that are already using that road on a regular basis, plus all of your private residence. And then you look at the wineries up behind us as well. So when, when we look at issues of traffic, there's, there's certain things like Casa de Mila Oro, the blind corner at Casa de Mila Oro, which has always been, every day I drive down there in the summertime, coming into town, I, I worry about a child being killed on that, on that blind corner. This is, you know, and you look at Island View, the width of the road, I pulled up a map to see what the standard, you know, twenty meters that we're supposed to have on all of our roadways, and the town, do we actually have that much? When you have cars parked on both sides, you've got, you've got little red stands in the middle of the road, kids crossing the road between parked cars, and it happens in front of Island View and Walnut Beach. Like Walnut Beach, there's always cars and trucks parked on that side, and this is not, you know, pointing out Walnut Beach or anybody, any of these other resorts, it's just mainly, it is an issue with traffic. And Walnut Beach, I mean, the cars parked there, so now if we lose that parking, where are they going to park? If some of them can't get underneath the, the height restriction in Walnut Beach. The, the current ponds and all the bull rushes, the, the ducks and that that are in there, I saw blue herons the other day when I passed, I've seen swans swimming in there, like, have we looked at those issues as far as the, the marshland and that that's in there? And I know you're addressing it with the, the parks and that, and we appreciate that. But the flooding also along Lake Shore Drive. The other day, I could barely get my car past parts of Walnut Beach there, it passed when you got to, almost to Casa de Mila Oro. I don't know if it's runoff from above, but it's not every time it rains. We've got tons and tons of water on the roadway all along Lake Shore Drive, so it's not just, you know, this isn't about the development, it's about things that we need to do as a city or community maybe before we, you know, take a look at adding two hundred and thirty-four more to two hundred and seventy-four more cars on that roadway. And then when we talk about safety, I just heard you say that you're going to take in twenty sixteen, how many years is that from now? That we're going to address a safety issue on a highway. Mayor and councillor, I have to ask you that, like, right now, when I pull out onto Lake Shore Drive, I've got traffic coming out of the Best Western, I've got traffic at the, what's the, what do you call that little, Rattlesdale Canyon? Kids crossing the roads left, right, and center. We're on a major thoroughfare with two trucks that are two boxes and three boxes coming barreling down the highway. Now we've got a side road access that goes to Rona Hardware, we've also got a new distillery on the corner, and then as soon as you get onto Lake Shore Drive, you've got a blind corner where kids are crossing as soon as you get around that corner. So I think we need to look long before twenty six, twenty twenty-six, to look at pedestrian crosswalks and lights on the highway. Now, I know that falls under the highway jurisdiction, but it's something that we definitely need to address right now. So then the issue of safety and evacuation. I know this was addressed back in two thousand and nine, I've read through mega reports here in town on what happens, and I know I said it the other day, and somebody said to me, well, it happens once in a lifetime, it's called a fire. Well, we had four of them in one year. We had one racing up from the south, from the US border, and if it had hit the end of Lake Shore Drive, we had the highway closed up at Rock Creek, we had the highways closed in town. We're now going to get another two hundred and seventy-four people, plus all of the people that are on Lake Shore Drive, plus all of the hotels, motels, and all of the stuff along Cottonwood, that has to come across one bridge. One bridge. And that's the only way out of town. So this isn't addressing just the construction, because I think it's a well-thought-out plan, and I know there's some issues with a lot of the residents, they were concerned about views and things like that. I think some of those have been addressed, but I'm sure we're going to hear some more comments on that. But my biggest concern, our concern of the residents is, do you, as city councillors, think that, are you prepared to handle the consequences if we do have a highway closure or we have an accident on the bridge? You know, I, as elected officials, you're, you're here to protect us and to serve the needs of the community. So I ask that you look at the needs of the community and the safety of the community first before we make a final reading on the development. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and I think you probably covered many of the things that other people are, but that's okay. If you feel the same way, you certainly can state your piece. So thank you very much for covering all those issues. Did you have a question you wanted to ask Mrs. McGinn? Go ahead.
Mr. McGinn, question? It sounds like you're not necessarily against the development, it's more looking at the safety issue of the highway and the crossing of Highway three?
Well, no, I think it's, it's the volume of the traffic and, and the density of the, of the development. I think that adding that many more people to that narrower road at this time is something that we really need to look at, and I'd like-
The road is more the issue than the development.
So it's really, I think that it should be maybe cut down in size, but, or-
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Colleen Lintell.
Mayor McCordough, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Colleen Lintell. My address is Kelowna, but I'm representing the Sonora Ridge developer, who lives in Kelowna, and some Sonora Ridge residents, which is the community immediately south from this development. You saw the community impact comments there that talked about all the positives that this would bring to the community, but there's no reference made to the impact to the adjacent residential communities. I think consideration should be given for the impact on the immediate neighbors and businesses of constructing two hundred and seventy-four more doors of development. Eileen mentioned two hundred and seventy-four, but really with occupancy of just two people per residence or four people per residence, that is going to add five hundred and fifty to over a thousand people residing within that development. And a thousand people is more than one-fifth of your current population. If all these residents were in permanent homes, single-family dwellings, that might be more acceptable, but at least sixty percent of them are going to be tourists, and some of these rental homes, even the single-family dwellings, from what I see, could also have tourist accommodations, so even more than six hundred tourists. And anybody in Asoas or elsewhere knows that in developments that have tourist rentals next door to owner-occupied houses is not a suitable mix. Vacationers are on holidays with families and friends, usually more than four in a household. They want a party twenty-four seven, they're here to have fun, they have their noise and their toys, and it is not a good mix. Phases four and seven are planned as tourist rental, and they back directly onto the east boundary slope to the homes above, and they're in close proximity to Chardonnay Court and Sonora Ridge to the south. We all know that noise rises, and there's no consideration to this density of tourists and the impact onto the existing residential. Add to that the commercial space to this residential traffic and noise, and it gets even worse. The, the application says there is a small amount of commercial, but elsewhere the application says there's twenty thousand square feet of commercial, that's in your traffic study. Add the additional traffic attracted to this commercial site, and the numbers, and the noise, and the congestion increase. Further, the community impact does not address the view onto these developments in the sightlines, and I think others are going to talk about that, so I'll skip over that. I appreciate that you did a traffic study for that intersection of Lake Shore and Highway three, and we talked about the timeframe for that, which is totally unreasonable, but what about the general traffic congestion in this area? Currently, this road in the summer is so busy with both pedestrian and vehicular traffic, everybody here knows that. Add to this existing congestion another thousand people, tourists trying to access the Lake Shore, the commercial stores, the speed limit now is posted as playground speed, and it's going to get even worse. Lake Shore Road is the main artery to serve many residents, Eileen outlined so many of those residents and parks and businesses further south. The traffic studies address traffic, but they don't address parking. traffic studies address traffic, but they don't address parking. Currently, there's not adequate parking along Lake Shore. Across from Walnut Beach and in front of this very property, there are always vehicles, trucks, cars, boat trailers parked along the road because there isn't enough space at the existing resorts before we add two hundred and seventy-four more units. There is no detailed description or plan of onsite parking in the application. It does not appear there is adequate parking for two hundred and seventy-four units, their guests, and parking to serve twenty thousand square feet of commercial. And there are no basements, so it means there can be no underground parking. And where will the boats and the watercraft and the trailers for all those tourists and for the permanent residents be accommodated? This is just more congestion to be dealt with. Should there not also have been a parking study, not just a traffic study? Those are my concerns about the community impact. I think the spin was on the positives, and I think it didn't present the total reality of the impact to the community. My second concern is about the sustainability impact. You saw it up there, and again, it reads that it will be handled to promote social and economic and environmental sustainability, and it will be encouraging the sensitive environmental design and adding a park. I need to know how, and I quote, "does removing all the vegetation, stripping all the top soil, excavating down one to two meters, filling the excavation with blast rock, providing subsurface drainage, and de-watering the entire site," end of quote, "on fourteen acres, and then building on top of that two hundred and seventy-four units of housing with all the inherent hard landscaping and roads." How does that qualify as sensitive environmental design and environmental sustainability? Again, positive spin, but it ignores the reality of what's happening. Yes, there'll be two ponds at the front for stormwater attenuation, but the entire fourteen acre property here is part of a natural drainage course and a wetland, and is essentially being destroyed.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Lindtill, but your five minutes is up. Could you keep the rest until after? We would certainly be happy to ask you up again, okay?
Okay, let's do it.
Thank you very much. Don Brogan.
Mayor and Counsel, thank you. My name's Don Brogan. I'm the general manager of Walnut Beach Resort at forty-two hundred Lake Shore Drive, right across the street from this property. My concerns, number one, is the parking. When we were going through the development of Walnut Beach and the first year or so of operations there, there was no parking across the street on the, on the side of the road. And we were having issues in the summertime with weddings specifically, with the people that attend the wedding that aren't staying at the resort, because most of the weddings are sixty to a hundred people that show up. About a third to a half of them might stay at the resort. The rest of them are local, you know, a lot of local families get married at these resorts, and so part of it is local. So they're coming and looking for a place to park. We have a hundred and fifty-four stalls in our parcade for our hundred and twelve suites, but there are size restrictions. The Pepsi truck driver that we come, stays every week with us, can't park underground. So when we got the parking across the street a number of years back, it was, it really helped. But when I was arguing with the council of the day, they were, I was told that the developer of Walnut Beach told the council of the day then that we wouldn't be having any weddings or anything in the summertime because it would be owners occupying the resort and not tourists. And I can't believe that the council of the day bought that, because nothing happens here in the wintertime, as we know, other than our wonderful snowbirds that come and occupy our place. But it all happens in the summertime. So what's going to happen about parking? How crowded is it going to be? The other thing I wanted to question was the dock at the marina that they want to install. It leaves very little room. I've got a very busy marina. I've got a commercial marina. It's not just residential. I've got businesses that operate off that marina. It's very busy. You're, it's, you're just a few feet off the middle of the lake where all the traffic has to go by because of the narrow spot in the lake there. And you're going to try and get people that are having a good time, drive their hundred thousand dollar boat around and try to, all, you know, get through the boats that are pontooned or moored out just, you know, with anchors, and then not hit the other boats and everything. It's just, it's too crowded in there as it is, and we're, you're thinking about putting another dock in there. When we were getting our dock built, it was of great concern to the east bench of the turbidity of the water, you know, next to the pump station. Now you're going to build right on top of that, and they're not going to be upset about that. I can wait for somebody to come up here and talk about that next. So I'm not against development or for developing that property, but the size and scope of the matter, it's, it's, it's too much. And it's, the way I see it playing out is it's just going to be a disaster. And ten-year plan, we're going to have construction noise for ten years across the street from the resort. And we're going to have a lot of happy people there, too. So that's.
Thank you very much. The next person on my list is Deb Cromwell.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Deb Cromwell. I'm representing Casa de Mila Oro, which is at fifty-four oh one Lake Shore Drive. We're on the blind corner. And we already feel that there is too much traffic going way too fast on Lake Shore Drive. In the summertime, it is almost impossible to turn left out of our resort until Lake Shore Drive. So my, my biggest concern is safety of our guests and our owners, and we would like to see some alternate route to take the traffic off of Lake Shore Drive and back onto Main or Highway Three, going in through the back. We would respectfully request that council consider that. And that's our main, main request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. By the way, if anybody has any presentations that they would like to, they have printed out and they would like to leave a copy of it, you give it to Mrs. Hilson, and she will take care of it. Thank you. Next is Grant McCullough.
Good afternoon, Counsel. My name is Grant McCullough. I represent forty-three hundred Forty-Fourth Avenue and forty-six oh one Lake Shore, right on the corner of Forty-Fourth and Lake Shore. And as I'm sure you all know, the empty lot beside us on the other side was supposed to be our Phase Three. That never happened. Excuse me. I've tried, the developers never get given us any paperwork. I've got a point. Saying why it didn't happen. I asked the town, and they said he has till 2016 to complete it. So it's just been left. So consequently, in our disclosure statements when we bought that place, there was going to be parking for everybody. But because that was never developed, in the summertime, Forty-Fourth Avenue gets overspilled because we don't have the spots. Now, there's a four-story tower right on the corner that could seriously affect our parking. We'll have no parking, basically, for all our tenants. So there's, I've got here from your WOT report, I don't know if this is a typo or what, it says the intersection of Forty-Fourth Avenue and Lake Shore will operate well into the future, year 2041, post-development. A marked pedestrian crosswalk is warranted to cross Lake Shore at Forty-Fourth Avenue. So obviously congestion's the issue. That really affects us because we will have no parking, well, not enough parking. And, and the other issue is we're right on Lake Shore, and as it has been addressed, we've got a dock. Walnut Beach has got a dock, and Island View's got a small dock. And it's just crazy from my balcony. I have a heart attack practically every day between paddlers and punks on speedboats and kids on floaties. It's a pretty popular part of the lake. And there's so many boys around us, the way the wind blows, our owners can't even get into their own boat slips because they're just dropped everywhere. So two hundred and seventy-five units, you don't come to Assouas without a boat. And it's crazy enough as it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Stop me, anybody, if you have questions, okay? Next is Robert Lindtill.
Madam Mayor, I do have comments to add, but in the essence of time and the schedule, I'll just waive my time to Colleen, who can continue with her comments.
Is that okay?
Could I ask you to wait and, and do it after? You've just, is that, does that make sense? I think I would.
I can speak, but the comments are probably be carried by Colleen, and she can speak in like the.
I, I'm just. I do have to go by the speaker's list, so I'm sorry if you, you know, I can't substitute in here. I could certainly ask Colleen to come up after when I finish the list.
I'll just waive my time and that.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Susan Listaway.
I'm going to wait.
You're gonna, you're gonna, okay, Maureen Potter.
And my concerns have been dealt with as well.
Okay. Please make sure that we don't know what your concerns are. They might have been dealt with, but if you have something written down, please give them to, to us so that we know. Patrick Hurley, am I correct?
My name is Patrick Hurley, and I live at four-two-one-two Thirty-Ninth Street, which on the plan, I think, is lot number eighteen. I share, our home overlooks the property, and we share the steep bank, probably at its steepest location. Now, other folks have already addressed some of the major issues that I've got. The density is incredible. The traffic in the summertime is unbelievable. It's almost non-functioning at this point, but other people have spoken more eloquently about that. I'm concerned, I don't even know if this is the right venue to address this issue, but at the steepest point of the bank, the geotek says that the bank is stable. I walked that bank. It's sand for at least three feet. The initial development calls for scraping basically all the vegetation off, digging down a few meters, and then trying to stabilize it. But there's no plan for any kind of retaining wall or any kind of mitigation against what I think construction will cause is bank slippage. I think the, the excavating, I think pile driving is going to be necessary in that lot, and it's going to be pounding and pounding, and eventually it's going to start sliding. And I want to know who's responsible when my lot starts to slide down the hill. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your concerns. Birgit Arnstein.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I signed the wrong paper.
Okay, all right. Brock Peyton.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, my name is Brock Peyton. I'm at thirty-eight eighteen Lake Shore Drive, right in the middle of your project. I, for the record, I, I'm for some development in that project. My concerns are the past city of Assouas. First issue, you built the sidewalk. You told those of us who lived on Lake Shore Drive, no one would park on our side of the road. We would lose some of our parking. We'd get this beautiful sidewalk. And you would put these nice big rocks there. Well, you didn't do it in commercial. And the people by the old Becker Building by the corner, they put a little piddly bit of gravel. And every day I come around the corner, there's some pickup truck or some service van, too lazy to walk across the street, parked half on the sidewalk and half on the road. So I'd like you to clean that up. When Walton's was built, you didn't put the rocks there, and for two years, we cried for it. Finally, you moved the fence back, I believe at city expense, and who parks there? Nobody but their guests. They could at least put some gravel there. It's a mud hole, okay? Island View has now cut down thirteen trees, and they park on that side of the road, contrary to what you told us. So that's a concern. Then when you built Becker's, they was, we were told they were going to get, don't quote me this, but I believe it was two-point-one parking spots per unit. And at the last minute, it's down to one-something. So we've got cars all over the place. When you built Walton's, you had to get permission from Perry and myself, because we're the closest to the development. And yes, we put up with the noise for a long time. And it was supposed to be condos. Then it was a restaurant. Oh, now it's weddings. So now we got cars all over the place. So my concern with the city council is, you ask us for our opinion. We come out here and, and give you our opinion. And then somewhere in the back halls of this octopi of a city hall, like any other city hall in the world, somebody changes the rules. Like, so we'll approve X amount of units for these gentlemen. We'll approve a parkland and, and how many parking spots and, and a dock somewhere. But I'll tell you, my history of living here is, three months or sooner before it's finished, oh, we, we cut back on the parking, and they don't have to build a sidewalk. And so my thing is, whatever we approve, you and us, write it down in blood, and don't change it.
Thank you, Mr. Peyton. Gail Borje. Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't, it says G's. I assumed it was Gales. Michelle Vrabel.
Hi. It's mainly about the traffic, and it's been dealt with.
Okay, thank you. So I will go down, there's three more people on the list. And first is Alan Abraham. Okay. Kami Moore.
Right there, Counsel. I'm Kami Moore, four-four oh one Forty-First, right behind the development. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the actual land itself. I walk that every day. There's several artesian springs in there that are constantly flowing. How are they going to scrape those out? That's one of my big concerns. And then about all the animals, the owls, the deers, I mean, the raptors aren't going to have a lot of spaces left. They don't hunt in the orchards because of the pesticides and things like that, and they don't really have a lot of grazing land left. I am also concerned about that weight load on that marshland, and our house is behind there. And where I am situated, we are the first of the lower rise of the houses there. And so I really hope that they did take a good perspective and look at everybody's view, not just the higher ones, because that view that we have is worth a lot, and I love it. So anyways, I am also concerned about the amount of buildings that are being put in there. I think it's way too much. And five hundred people on that marina dock down there, there's no beach left much. And I just think it's way too much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Phil, I'm going to have trouble saying it.
Phil Tarantik, thank you.
Tarantik.
Mayor, Counsel, I live at number five, Chardonnay Court. And I think a lot of my concerns have been talked about, and so I'll be very brief. I have been in construction for going now thirty-nine years. I'm used to a building like in Richmond, which is a bog. And when I see this swamp, I'm amazed at that somebody would want to build there because this is not like Richmond, which is flat and level. This is on a slope. And to me, the whole issue of water coming down there, I know that when we built, I hit water at six feet. My neighbor hit it at two feet. And then my neighbor on the other side, he just did a pilot drilling, and he hit it at eight and a half feet. So there's no rhyme or reason really of the amount of water that is coming down that slope. We really will not know until there's a high hoe up there and digging. And when we were driving by, we did observe the geotecs coming in with their white hard hats and their shovels. And that was the extent of the geotech, as far as I know. Whether or not they ever did bring in even a backhoe, I don't know. But my, my concern is, is that to build on that type of slope, they will need pile driving. And we know what, there can be damage done to other residences, their foundations, that kind of thing from pile driving, the noise and all that, besides the cost. I just feel that the, the amount of units that they want to put in there is way too high, as everybody else has stated. And that is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, Mrs. Lindtill, would you like to?
Can I say something just before she gets started? Because I don't think it's going to take a while.
She is, she's got, she's got five minutes.
Just a quick thing. Another thing about the parking in the area. I know we've also, council has also approved eighty additions to Village on the Lake. And I understand there's a proposal somewhere for seventy more additional sites at. and I, I understand there's a proposal somewhere for, um, seventy more additional sites at, um, where the water slides are. Um, I was talking with some of the realtors in town and that, there's already, well, there's actually an empty spot beside Village on the Lake that eighty more sites can go into, so now you're getting the congestion of the two hundred and seventy-four plus eighty right next door plus a potential seventy where the water park are. And nobody approves parking. And every time, and it's not just this council, it's the councils before these too, that we keep approving these and approving them and like Dawn said at, um, at, um, Walnut Beach, we approve the buildings, but we're not thinking about the parking. And the parking is triplicate. It's not just, like Jim said, do you approve the subdivision? No, it's not just the, um, two hundred and thirty-four, it's the boats, it's the car, it's the four per household. And, um, anyway, that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you again. What I was talking about was that there was an environmental site assessment was done, but all that does is establish that the land isn't contaminated, but there never was an environmental impact assessment study. And ourselves and other developers represented in this room all had to do environmental impact studies as it affects not only that land and we know that that whole property is one big wetland and this lady had just talked about all the creatures and whatever in there and then there's going to be a marina proposed and/or a dock, that too should have environmental assessment approval. So I do not know why this developer was not required to do that kind of a thing. You can see all that I'm skipping over here, but I'm gonna go straight to development approvals. Because in the October seventeenth planning report to Council, it says this, "Staff proposes an innovative zoning approach to contain the front-end costs," that's the developer's costs, "instead of the common practice," that means what every other developer has to do, "of requiring the applicant to provide full details on all aspects of their proposed development upfront. In this case, they can fulfill part of their submission requirements by successfully applying for individual development permits prior to commencing each phase." Sounds like some special latitude here and some leniency. The CD nine description states, seven of the phases, uh, the phases could take ten years, the number of range, uh, units could range two thirty-four to two seventy-four. And then it says, depending on the market, and I heard this today, some possible commercial space and then it says a small amount of commercial space and then it says twenty thousand square feet of commercial space. Most developers come with a definitive plan. And then it says phasing and scheduling, that there will be a deviation of plus or minus five units, but we'll do subsequent bylaw amendments, some more latitude. And then the CD nine map shows four-story units of apartment, and I heard it today, slash hotel. Hotel, we hadn't heard that before. So what is the real plan and where is the full disclosure? This sounds like preferential treatment and planning to allow for open-ended changes and approvals that could lead to quite a different complex than is currently presented. I'm concerned of what assurances are being presented to us by the developer and to us by the town. The drawings show no architectural renderings, no landscape plans, no sidewalks, no parking details, no marina details, but then they weren't asked to provide details upfront. It's the bare minimum for us to evaluate, it's the bare minimum to get rezoning approval. And for me, there's one huge disconnect. You saw the geotechnical reports, the developer knows this is an extremely expensive site to make construction ready. Maybe that's why we're proposing so many units to offset this cost. But the developer has spent money and has done due diligence on a site design report and on the geotechnical assessment that has confirmed just how bad this site really is. The report says, the engineers say, it's a swampy, salty, slippery site. But nobody's invested much money upfront to do the plans that go with it, the architecture. We didn't see any pictures of anything here today of what it's gonna look like. So I really wonder, going forward, are we just getting this property rezoned to CD nine so it can be put on the market again? Or are we really going forward here with the development? And the other two pages or three, I guess I leave.
Uh, thank you very much. And, uh, I certainly thank all of you for your, for stating your concerns on this and I'm now going to ask, um, uh, Mr. Schmidt or Mr. Meridian if they would like to respond to any of the things that have been mentioned. And if so-
Well, I wanted to thank everyone for their comments. Uh, as you know, we've been working on this project for several year, several years. The property has been there, sitting vacant like that for about fourteen or fifteen years that I know of, that has been within our group. Um, we took the approach of, uh, looking at redeveloping the property. We had numerous conversations with, uh, the, um, City of Osceos, uh, the planning people. We have had a number of engineers that have been working very diligently with, um, with the planning department and the engineers at the, at the, at the Osceos. And they've addressed a lot of those concerns regarding the, regarding the land and the ability to be able to develop the property and what can be developed on the property. We have had conversations about what Osceos wanted to see there, uh, at one point in time. In the past, prior to me getting involved, there's been proposals for mobile home park on the sites and, uh, which was a lot lower density and those type of things. And they were all turned down or rejected at the, at the infancy stage by Osceos. That's not what they wanted to see there. Everyone wanted to see the area to be developed more of a residential neighborhood and we have worked within the confinement of that. We have tried to create a development, uh, where, um, the units are gonna be affordable, they're gonna be more for local residents, um, the type of development that, uh, that can be sustainable. And, uh, you know, as far as the traffic and the stuff like that is concerned, I mean, I, I personally live in, in Seashell, so I don't come from downtown Vancouver, so don't think I'm coming over here and trying to create downtown Vancouver here. I live in a small community just like here. I'm very sensitive to the environmental stuff. Uh, we do have the same kind of a situation that happens over there. You know, there's nine thousand people live there, but during the summertime, it goes up to thirty-five thousand people. Roads do get congested, they do get busy. That's just the nature of living in tourist, uh, tourist-style town, that's what happens. And, uh, yes, there is, there is pressure on, on, uh, Council and, uh, and the city to, uh, to improve the roads and, and traffic and everything else, but we all know there is restrictions of what you can do. I mean, for three months of traffic that happens during the summertime, you know, it's not that easy to just go and start doing improvements and expanding roads and everything else. As far as the parkings are concerned, I mean, I heard people are saying that, you know, Walnut Grove, uh, has got an issue because they've got weddings over there and they don't have enough parking. Well, I mean, I think that's an issue that Walnut Grove needs to address, okay? If they wanna have weddings there and they're gonna have two hundred people attending the weddings, they gotta make sure they have enough parking. I mean, if they got a hundred and fifty-four parking installs for a hundred and thirteen suites, perhaps something went wrong at the beginning, okay? But, uh, we weren't there to do that, so that needs to be addressed. Perhaps some of the issues that have been brought up, where it goes to the traffic and parking and lack of parking and people parking in the streets, maybe some of that stuff we can work with your planning departments. And maybe there is some merits in creating some, uh, off-street parking of some sort, some loading, uh, loading areas and those type of things in order to ease the pain. Some of the, some of the traffic issues, you know, in terms of, uh, doing, um, um, lower speed limits, uh, perhaps doing some crosswalks, uh, those type of things, we can work, we can work with your planning department. As far as the traffic and the entrance to the highway, as you know, this is a highways department kind of a situation. It's not easy to work with them, they have their regulations, they have their, the way, the way they do things and, uh, they don't necessarily co- you know, coincide with what we wanna see, okay? So, but we're willing to work with them, we have worked with your planning department, we have engaged traffic studies and, uh, we're trying to follow what they're, what they're putting forth, uh, in front of us. Uh, as far as the, the land and the marshy land and everything else, I mean, look, we have got engineers, we have got geotech engineers, we've got structural engineers, we've got environmental engineers. All we can do, we can rely on the reports that they provide us and the solutions that they come up with. So, so far, they're telling us what we are proposing is doable, it can be done, and they have got methods of dealing with it. And as we go through this development and each phase of the development, there will be more public consultation and each phase of the development is gonna go through further public consultation and we will provide most of the things that have been asked, uh, in this, in this meeting tonight. I mean, there will be more drawings, there will be more accurate numbers, there will be more, more of everything that has been asked and everybody's gonna have opportunity in order to participate and we will listen again. This meeting tonight is all about establishing density setbacks and the overall concept and the phasing of this development, okay? That's, that's what it's all about. We have talked about it and each phase of that development is gonna have to go through normal development process and we will go through that and provide more detailed information. As far as the marina is concerned, you know, this was actually a suggestion that was made that perhaps a marina would be an added benefit in that area, okay? So we have taken it, we have shown it on our plans, there has been no work done on the marina, there has been no, we have not done any further studies whether the marina is feasible, whether it's doable. This property is not a waterfront piece of property, we don't even have, uh, we don't even have access to the waterfront. And, uh, you know, so there's, there's been no environmental studies done on it because we have nothing to study, okay? So it was something that was brought up and a possibility that, you know, these residents that are gonna be there, they probably wanna use the beach, they wanna go to the beach, you know, is it possible to create something here for the residents to be able to have an easier access to the, to the, to the lake? And we said, we will look at that and that's exactly all we are doing, we're just looking at it. It's an infancy stage and it will be some time before, even if, to even find out if it's possible, so we don't know that. Um, as far as the, um, traffics on, on Lake Shore Drive and everything else, I mean, I'm not so sure if we can, we can answer all those questions. I'm not so sure if we can address all those questions. I mean, this is a community issue and the whole community needs to come together and with the highways department and everything else to be able to address that. We are a small part of that section of the road. There's been many other, many other developments in that road and, and in the past and in the future. As far as the development itself, everybody talks about it being two hundred and thirty-four units and two hundred and seventy-four units and the fact there's gonna be five hundred people moving here. I mean, everybody makes it sound like five hundred people are ready to move in here tomorrow. Quite honestly, if I was living in this community and the community was growing that quickly over, uh, that quickly overnight, it would be a good thing. There would not be an issue to expand roads and build sidewalks and roads and everything else. Reality is, you're looking at two hundred and thirty, two hundred and seventy-five units being built over the course of ten years and that in itself is very, very optimistic. Have a look at around the developments that have been taking, taking place and how long does it take for them to be where they are today? Likelihood is, you're gonna see in an average of about fifteen to twenty units being able to add, to be added on over the course of the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. That is if the market conditions continue to be the way they are and move forward. So, it's not a two hundred and seventy-four unit being built overnight. It's not like you're gonna all of a sudden drive down Lake Shore Drive in the next year and find out there's been a monumental development of two hundred and seventy-five, uh, units and, and, you know, six people living in each unit and, uh, there's a thousand people living on, on that section of the road. It's not gonna happen like that, it would be great if it does, but it's not. So what we're gonna be looking at, what we should be considering is, really is, you know, we're looking at building fifteen to twenty homes over the course of the next, on an annual basis over the course of the next ten, fifteen years. That's really what it is. And how does that impact the traffic, not how does two hundred and seventy-five homes will impact the traffic as if it's gonna happen tomorrow? So, I think from, you know, I wasn't taking notes, I took mental notes. I think I've addressed everyone's questions and concerns, but I'm more than happy to take individual questions and try to respond to it as best as I can.
Thank you very much. Councilor Campbell?
Thank you. Um, one of the hot-button topics in the community here is, uh, affordable and attainable housing and I noticed in, um, a local publication here, uh, it was quoted, uh, that it's targeted as being affordable homes. Is that a blanket statement that they're gonna be priced fairly low? Or is there, uh, is, are we talking about a, a portion of the development that would be, uh, considered affordable housing? I just wanna understand that.
I think the, the whole concept of the development was, first of all, the development is gonna take place, as I said, over the course of the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, okay? And, um, and the, the most optimistic, uh, time schedule is probably ten years for that many units to be built in Osceos. So the whole idea and the concept of the development was to create smaller lots and create smaller homes, okay? These homes are gonna be ranging, uh, from about fourteen hundred square feet to about fifteen hundred square feet. I'm talking about single-family homes, okay? And we have created a situation there that they can be in the form of a duplex lot, so they can be two, for instance, twelve hundred square foot homes or thirteen hundred square foot homes. And the whole idea was, was to make these, these homes affordable. So locals and people who are moving here, even from other areas, we hear it all the time. People are being priced out of their homes, they're being priced over their markets, okay? We, I, as I said, I live in Seashell, we're doing developments in Seashell, I'll be hearing it all the time. People are saying that, look, you know what, I want like fifteen hundred square foot, uh, foot home, I want it to be affordable and the affordability usually ranges around three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's what we are trying to keep most of these units to be around. Yes, there are gonna be some other units that are gonna be more expensive, you know, as the years go by, but that's the whole idea, keep them small and keep them affordable.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I thank you very much for responding to, uh, many of the concerns and, um, and I'm going to ask, if we're, a second time, if there is anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw. Please come for-
I wanna ask one more, you said it's environmentally sensitive?
Yeah.
Why are you building houses on top of our, um, the Artesian springs and the streams in there? You're supposed to be thirty feet away from streams. Isn't that what the agriculture thing says?
You know what, we have hired the engineers, the environmental engineers-
I watched them, they spent two days in there walking around putting in the springs.
No, no, that's not true, that's not true. The reports, the reports are available, they have done test holes, okay? And quite a number of test holes and, and you know what, I am not qualified to question the work of the engineers.
Yeah.
We have hired engineers in order to do the work-
You just have to walk on the property, the, the springs are right there, you've got houses right on top of them. Where's the water gonna go?
Excuse me, I, could you please, you can only address the chair in this, I'm sorry about that.
I'm new to this whole thing.
And absolutely, if you have some concerns, uh, Mrs. Hilsen is writing them down, so we do have-
Alright.
We do have those absolutely noted, okay?
Thank you.
Please come, please come forward, yes, and state your name and, uh, and your address.
Uh, yeah, my name is Larry and I live at four zero zero zero, on Thirty-Ninth Street, above on the bench. And, uh, they did do seismic work there, I'm, I'm oilfield guy. And anyway, I would like to say also that with that much traffic, in the old days, there was a road proposed to go below our bench to come to that area. It was supposed to go right through where Sonora is, that was stopped, the road dead ends down here. Maybe allow this development, you might wanna take a road off the highway, come back, all the way through past and where it was originally designed, so it makes less traffic on Lake Shore. It's very simple.
Couldn't handle it.
Couldn't handle it, it's just it can handle it, just on the bottom you can. It's, uh, and also, part of the water leaking down there is our sewage, because we're not on town water.
Or on town sewer. So, uh, I believe, um, uh, Mr. Cunningham has written those kinds of things down or they'll be in the minutes, so we know that to address those. Um, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Well, I've got one more, I've got one more thing. I wanna say, you know what, and we don't have access to our bottom property if this development is made. We can't go through Sonora, because they, they're a strata where I used to come through to my property. I can't come off Lake Shore, there's several of us have half acres in. And we can't come to our bottom property, we can't come from the top. How, if our sewage leaks like just after this winter, lucky Sonora let the people go through there with their equipment to make a new field to my neighbor. And I had to get access across my property as well. Nobody's addressed that, we can't get to our property.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mrs. McGinn, would you like to, and then, uh, Mrs. Lintell? And then, that will be, that will be, I, I'm assuming all, is that, we'll ask again.
I guess we've addressed the issue of parking several times, but I don't see anywhere in here, what are they going to do in the development and, and what is town prepared to do with the parking with this development?
Thank you. Well, no, it's certainly been mentioned and we'll certainly look at it, for sure. Mrs. Lintell?
Will there be an environmental impact assessment study done? Because in the regulations where it lists what things have to be done, it doesn't list that to be done before the next series of approvals. It lists what has to be done under those requirements, but it doesn't list an environmental impact assessment study.
Yeah, I can respond to that. We have been contacted over recent days by Ministry of Environment and they are concerned about some potential environmental impacts on the property. They don't know what, they don't have any baseline information themselves. So I would be talking to, uh, the developers for the need for that, uh, right at the outset of the process and we would involve the provincial environmental en- ministry in any terms of reference for that study.
Oh, good, okay. Yeah, and, and I would just like to say that that is part of a waterway, because this lady here, Bridget, whatever, there used to be a man here, I think he has since deceased, Lionel Dallas, who contacted us when we were developing Sonora Ridge and he knows a lot, knew a lot about the waterways and they start from across the road from us and they came up across our property, that's why that water feature was put in the front of our property, drains down there, pass Chardonnay Court, through your whole property and anywhere, he said, that anywhere that when they made that golf course, they put rubber liners in those ponds, but all you've gotta do is dig and you've got a natural pond already. And there are a lot of creatures in there. So I think we need a study, thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I'm going to ask for the third and final time if there is anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw. further to the proposed bylaw. Yes?
Can I just ask what the town?
Please, please come up to the microphone with your, is it Michelle?
Yeah, it's Michelle Brable. And I live at five-two-two-nine Lake Shore Drive. And I just want to know, with all these people who are planning on most likely coming here in the summer, where are all these people going to go to the beach? Because there's no public beach on that side, and, there is?
Well, sure.
Okay. But the point I'm trying to make is, in that area, where are all these people going to start accessing the water? And already on that street, there's so much traffic in the summer, it's really dangerous. And if there's a way that town can reroute traffic, I think it should definitely be addressed. I'm not against development, but I think it's actually a dangerous idea to add that many more people to the area.
Good. Thank you very much. So I will ask again for the third time if there is anyone else who would like to speak to this bylaw? No? Hearing none. I declare that this public hearing on this bylaw is now closed, and we will move on to the second portion of the public hearing. So if you would like to stay for the second portion, you are welcome to. This is on the regional growth strategy. If not, perhaps you'd want to, and thank you, thank you all for coming, and we have certainly noted your concerns, believe me.
And it's absolutely, this next one is absolutely boring. Scotch.
Scotch, okay, fine. Tall ones.
Yeah, no.
You are staying overnight in town?
Seems to me there's a lot of issues that need to be dealt with before we do anything. I know, I know.
Oh, yeah, it's beautiful.
And the parking and the traffic.
And if you drive across, you take another.
Staff summary of the second regional growth strategy. So the board of the Regional District of Okanagan-Semilkamine, RDO S, has approved an amended version of the South Okanagan Regional Growth Strategy, which necessitates in turn that the town of Ososius amend the regional growth, regional context statement in our OCP showing how we support the RGS. Council gave first and second readings to the following bylaw amendment on February the sixth, two thousand and seventeen. OCP bylaw amendment number twelve-thirty dot nineteen, two thousand and seventeen, to replace our current regional context statement. And so I do not have any correspondence about this, and so I will ask Mr. Cunningham to talk about the staff report.
So I hope that the sole representative of the press is listening very carefully
to this important presentation.
Is going to be quiet?
All right. On January fifth, two seventeen, the RDS Regional Board approved amended version of the South Okanagan Regional Growth Strategy, RGS, which in turn requires Ososius to amend the regional context statement, RCS, in our OCP showing how it supports the RGS. On February twentieth, two seventeen, council gave first and second readings to the attached copy of our OCP Amendment Bylaw, number one-two-three-zero dot nineteen, two seventeen. Overview: The original South Okanagan Regional Growth Strategy was adopted by the RDS Board on April first, two ten. It applies to electoral areas A, C, D, E, and F, and municipalities of Bendick and Summerlin, Oliver, and Ososius, but does not extend in the Semilkamine Valley. According to the Local Government Act, the purpose of an RGS is, quote, "to promote human settlement that is socially, economically, and environmentally friendly, and that makes best and efficient use of public facilities and services, land, and other resources." All regional district bylaws and services must be, quote, "consistent with the RGS after adoption," whereas member municipalities have to meet the less demanding standard of submitting, quote, "a regional context statement for regional board approval, which is consistent, quote, 'with the rest of their OCP, demonstrates, quote, 'relationships between the OCP and the RGS, and if applicable, lays out how their OCP will be made consistent with the RGS over time.'" The Local Government Act requires that a RGS be reviewed for possible amendment at least every five years. The RDS decided that only minor refinements were necessary at this time, as opposed to a major review, which would have required an intensive public consultation process. A consultant was retained to work with a project steering committee comprising senior planners from the RDS and member municipalities, and they agreed on numerous refinements for forwarding to the RDS Board, including updated population projections, organizational restructuring of the RDS for improved readability and ease of locating topics, and considerable editing of its policies to improve their clarity and consistency and to remove redundancies. Consequent refinements needed to our regional context statement include reordering OCP policy references to match the new RGS structure and referencing new policies added to our OCP since original RGS adoption. Impacts: Community. Although the RDS did not need to consult with residents to approve the amended RGS, the town has to follow the normal public process for amending our OCP, which is why we're here tonight. Organizationally, the Director of Planning and Development Services are members of the technical committee that contributed to the original RGS and its ongoing implementation, and participated in the project steering committee on its update. In latter capacity, the director has recommended that the minor RGS update be followed relatively shortly with a major review to ensure its ongoing relevancy and efficacy. Budget: Nothing. Significant dates following the public hearing, the council has to give third reading to our regional context statement bylaw and then submit it to the RDS Board for acceptance before council finally adopts. Sustainability: The intent of the RGS is largely centered on promoting social, economic, and environmental sustainability. So I'll ask, please, that you, that, well, no, I'm not going to ask.
Thank you.
I'll ask when I come back in two weeks' time. Thank you.
Okay, so we, I have to ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak to this bylaw, and unless Keith has a question. No, okay. So I have to ask that for a second time. Is there anyone wishing to speak? A third time and hearing none. I hereby declare this public hearing on this bylaw is now closed and declare that the public hearing is adjourned. Is there something else formal that we have to do?